Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Tuesday, September 28, 2021, meeting of the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners. I am Commissioner and Chair Rick Vest. To my left is Commissioner Vice Chair Deb Shore. To her left is Commissioner Sean Flowerday. To my right is Commissioner Roma Amundson, and to her right, Commissioner Krista Yocum. Would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, please begin the meeting.
Copying the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located on the wall of the rear of the hearing room. Additionally, all material to be discussed at today's open meeting is available for electronic viewing from the county clerk's staff. Printing options are available upon request. The material can also be viewed on the county's website at lancaster NE.gov. Agenda one or minutes, approve the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held on Tuesday, September 21, 2021.
Move approval, second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Any discussion, please call the rule.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Next, for claims, approval of all claims processed through September 28, 2021, and this needs two amendments. One amendment to include a payment voucher from the county sheriff's office, and the other amendment to include payroll ending September 22, 2021.
I move approval of the claims, including the payroll dated September 30 and the the claims with the sheriff.
Was that payroll September 22?
I'm sorry, yes, it is.
Is that September 22?
September 27, to be paid September 30. That's where I got the date.
Very good. We have a motion?
Second.
And a second to approve the claims. Please call the rule.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Next, for consent items, these are routine business items that are expected to be adopted without dissent. Any individual item may be removed for special discussion and consideration by a commissioner or by any member of the public without prior notice. Unless there's an exception, these items will be approved as one with a single vote of the Board of Commissioners. These items are approval of. Change order number three, County Contract C-21-14 with JJK Construction LLC, for an additional occasion extending the contract end date from October 8, 2021 to October 10, 2021. Change order number five, the County Contract C-21-378 with Pavers Inc. Grant contracts with the following: YWCA Lincoln for the Life Skills Program; City of Lincoln for the Take Pause Program; City of Lincoln for the Coordinated Response to Reducing Domestic Violence Program; the Salvation Army for the Sudanese Advocacy Program; amendments to County Contracts C-18-288 with Encompass for Annual Supply Office Seating; C-17-953 with Aetna for its self-funded Employee Benefits Plan; C-19-317 with Vigilant, VigilNet America LLC for Electronic Offender Monitoring Services; setting of a public hearing for a Class CK Liquor License Application from Hillside Events LLC on Tuesday, October 12, 2021, at 9:00 a.m. in Room 112 of the County City Building.
Move approval of the consent items?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent items. Any discussion, please call the rule.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Number four is new business. Four A is a special designated license application from Ken's Liquor to hold an event at Hillside Event Center on October 2, 2021.
Is there anyone here to speak on this? Seeing none.
I will move approval, second.
We have a motion and a second to approve this special designated license application. Please call the rule.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. B is a recommendation from the purchasing agent and county engineer to award a bid to Midwest Sales and Service for the annual supply of greater blades.
Move approval, second.
I just have a question. Are you pleased with the price?
Yes.
Okay.
It was part of the budget, so I guess.
Okay. I know steel costs have gone up, and I...
It's a little bit high, but we, you know, it's something we have to deal with. As far as moving people, for the migrators and personnel reasons.
Very good. We have a motion and a second to approve. Please call the rule.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. C is a grant contract with Lincoln Collin to promote this year's event. The county will reimburse promotional costs in an amount not to exceed $5,000 from the visitors' promotion fund.
Move approval, second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Please call the rule.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. D is an agreement with Felsberg, Holt, and Yulivig for environmental services for projects in Lancaster County, Nebraska.
Move approval, second.
We have a motion and a second to approve item D. Any discussion, please call the rule.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Four E is to be held per the county attorney. F is a contract with Midwest Alarm Services to provide a fire alarm panel inspection, test, and repair and replacement.
Move approval, second.
We have a motion and a second to approve this contract. Any discussion, please call the rule.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. G has authorized Harry Wagner, Lancaster County Sheriff, to execute an addendum to County Contract C-20-54 with the United States Marshals Service to require its task force officers assigned to the USMS Task Force to use body worn cameras.
Move approval, second.
We have a motion and a second to approve item G. Please call the rule.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. H is licensure renewal application with the Nebraska Department of Health and Human Services for operation at the Lancaster County Mental Health Crisis Center.
Move appro... I move approval, second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Please call the rule.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Four I are documents related to binding of insurance coverage for Lancaster County. This includes Nebraska's selection of higher uninsured, underinsured motorist coverage limits, policyholder disclosure, notice of terrorism in insurance coverage, and client authorization to bind coverage.
Move approval, second.
We have a motion and a second to approve item I. Please call the rule.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. J is approval of the following policies recommended for approval by the Information Services Policy Committee. This includes system and communication protection policy and system and information integrity policy.
Do we have anyone here who wants to speak on these policies? It appears we do not.
I will move approval, second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the following policies. Please call the rule.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Next is number five, public comment. Those wishing to speak on items relating to county business, not on agenda, may do so at this time.
All right. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on items that are not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll close public comment.
Next is announcements. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold a Youth Services Center Director Candidate Discussion Meeting on Thursday, September 30, 2021, at 8:30 a.m. in Room 112 of the County City Building. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold a meeting with village representatives on Thursday, September 30, 2021, at 8:30 a.m. in Room 113 of the County City Building. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold its next staff meeting on Thursday, September 30, 2021, at 10:15 a.m. in Room 113 of the County City Building. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold its next regular meeting on Tuesday, October 5, 2021, at 9 a.m., with the Board of Equalization meeting immediately following in Room 112 of the County City Building. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold a public hearing for the One and Six Year Road and Bridge Improvement Program on Tuesday, October 12, 2021, at 6:30 p.m. in Room 112 of the County City Building. County Commissioners can be reached at 402-441-7447 or commish@lancaster NE.gov. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting is broadcast live on Link TV City. For the rebroadcast schedule, visit lincoln NE.gov. Meetings are also streamed live on Link TV and can be viewed on YouTube. Next is number seven, executive session.
I move we go into executive session for the purposes of labor negotiations, legal advice, to protect the public interest at 9:14.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to go into executive session. Please call the rule.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Very good. We have a motion and a second to approve. Please call the rule.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Next is number five, public comment. Those wishing to speak on items relating to county business, not on agenda, may do so at this time.
All right. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on items that are not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll close public comment.
Next is announcements. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold a Youth Services Center Director Candidate Discussion Meeting on Thursday, September 30, 2021, at 8:30 a.m. in Room 112 of the County City Building. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold its next staff meeting on Thursday, September 30, 2021, at 10:15 a.m. in Room 113 of the County City Building. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold its next regular meeting on Tuesday, October 5, 2021, at 9 a.m., with the Board of Equalization meeting immediately following in Room 112 of the County City Building. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold a public hearing for the One and Six Year Road and Bridge Improvement Program on Tuesday, October 12, 2021, at 6:30 p.m. in Room 112 of the County City Building. County Commissioners can be reached at 402-441-7447 or commish@lancaster NE.gov. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting is broadcast live on Link TV City. For the rebroadcast schedule, visit lincoln NE.gov. Meetings are also streamed live on Link TV and can be viewed on YouTube. Next is number seven, executive session.
I move we go into executive session for the purposes of labor negotiations, legal advice, to protect the public interest at 9:14.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to go into executive session. Please call the rule.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Next is number five, public comment. Those wishing to speak on items relating to county business, not on agenda, may do so at this time.
All right. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on items that are not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll close public comment.
Next is announcements. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold a Youth Services Center Director Candidate Discussion Meeting on Thursday, September 30, 2021, at 8:30 a.m. in Room 112 of the County City Building. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold its next staff meeting on Thursday, September 30, 2021, at 10:15 a.m. in Room 113 of the County City Building. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold its next regular meeting on Tuesday, October 5, 2021, at 9 a.m., with the Board of Equalization meeting immediately following in Room 112 of the County City Building. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold a public hearing for the One and Six Year Road and Bridge Improvement Program on Tuesday, October 12, 2021, at 6:30 p.m. in Room 112 of the County City Building. County Commissioners can be reached at 402-441-7447 or commish@lancaster NE.gov. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting is broadcast live on Link TV City. For the rebroadcast schedule, visit lincoln NE.gov. Meetings are also streamed live on Link TV and can be viewed on YouTube. Next is number seven, executive session.
I move we go into executive session for the purposes of labor negotiations, legal advice, to protect the public interest at 9:14.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to go into executive session. Please call the rule.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Very good. Yeah, we appreciate that. A motion to approve will be to approve the special permit allowing soil mining on this property. To deny would mean there is no special permit. I think we're all familiar with the details here, so I'll stop there. Any thoughts, commissioners? Any motions?
Were there, as a result of the discussions we had, were there any additional items added to the conditions, or are we renewing the conditions as they were previously in the special permit?
So it's a little bit of a mix. So I worked with Pam to come up with conditions to... So their biggest concerns were haul routes, water, I can't remember the third one. But anyways, we have that road maintenance agreement, which did call into some of the requirements for, you know, dust abatement measures for how they're hauling. As Pam discussed last week, they... Her concern with the haul routes is making sure that they get onto pavement as soon as possible. After looking into it, some of those proposed haul routes from the people who testified, it would have taken twice as much gravel to get to pavement, which might alleviate the concerns for some people, but then the additional miles we're adding of gravel is just gonna add on to that. So what we did is, instead of adding certain things into the road maintenance agreement, we pulled out those requirements and put them into the special permit directly. So I'll show you a couple. So one of the things we worked on is kind of clearing up some of those, some of that language to make it more of a requirements, more spell out the requirements for dust abatement measures.
We don't have it on here.
Power would work. Thanks, sorry. Okay. So the special permit already included language that required a road maintenance agreement. We already have one in place, but we are requiring a revised one, just to kind of update it from the past few years, and then also to get in, to alleviate some of those concerns that have been brought up. So some of the things that we for sure want in the road maintenance agreement, Pam wants to be, have written notice prior to any day they'll have more than four trucks leaving the site. So that'll be a new requirement in the road maintenance agreements. More information about how, if they track materials onto the road, so when they're hauling out or hauling in and dirt is on the road and it rains and then it gets muddy, things of that nature. Other things, requirement that essentially if we need to ask them to do more maintenance on the roads, to clean them up, do things of that nature, and they don't abide, if we have to then start sending out motor patrols and doing that maintenance ourself, then it'll be under their cost. And then, let's see. The other things we took from the road maintenance agreement and put in the special permit, and this one goes to, again, tracking the flow of materials and additional things that the engineer can require. So if the measures they have in place aren't doing what it should be, and they need more based on their use of their permit on that property, then Pam can go in on review and... Well, not Pam, but engineering can go in on review and add additional things to help. The other one that's more specific to what was discussed last week is more clear cut water abatement or dust abatement measures. So if there's gonna be more than 10 loaded trucks a day, then they're going to have to... Let's see. They have to water every two hours throughout the day on any of those gravel haul routes. Now, the only exception to this that Pam said, and this goes with what, I don't even know what regulations this is under, but essentially if there's a half an inch of precipitation within 48 hours, then they don't have to, then they don't have to haul. So that's the only exception. But yeah, other than that, if there's more than 10 trucks, which Pam will be notified because it's over the four, so if there's more than 10 trucks, then they have to water. And that notification just helps them know and to be able to prepare and staff if they do have to send people out there to patrol. But this also helps taking it out of just engineering enforcing it, because it's not just in that road maintenance agreement, it's baked into the special permit.
So all of this language, other than the watering every two hours, it sounds like it was all in the road maintenance agreement, we're just moving it over. So the applicant agreed to all this language in the first special permit?
Yes. Yep. The language is just a little bit more clear of it. It spells, instead of just attaching an exhibit with the haul routes, we spelled them out. We just did a little bit more working with the language. That way it was 100% clear.
But we're not requiring, we're requiring them to use a particular road. I mean, they still have the ability to choose whichever route's most efficient?
Well, they're the routes that have been previously approved.
Okay.
So with the last special permit, and then we'll renew it with these new ones. So it's that same route that only takes, I believe, a mile and a half maybe to get to gravel or pavement.
Okay.
So it's those same haul routes, we just spell them out instead of just attaching a picture.
Okay, all right.
Or, yeah.
And so now it becomes enforceable by building and safety as opposed to just the county engineer's office?
Correct. Yep. And then, you know, we just thought another part of it is putting it in the special permit and not just leaving it up to the road maintenance agreement that will be future and might help, you know, clear it up for the people that have concerns, because it's specifically spelled out. The other thing that we did was, you know, one of those concerns was the haul route. So like I said, we, Pam went through, looked at all the haul routes, and we just completely, completely laid them out. Before they make any changes to their haul routes, they need to give prior notice to engineering. That way, that way we can work with them on it. Those were the main things that were done and that language worked on to, to help try and, yeah, clear up some of those concerns. out. The other thing that we did was, you know, one of those concerns was the haul route. So like I said, we, Pam went through, looked at all the haul routes, and we just completely, completely laid them out. Before they make any changes to their haul routes, they need to give priority notice to engineering. That way, that way we can work with them on it. Those were the main things that were done and that language worked on to help try and, yeah, clear up some of those concerns.
Well, it sounds like we raised the watering requirements. I mean, we added in the caveat, if it's rained within 48 hours, but we then, every... Because before, it was three times a day, as I recall.
I don't... Was it that... Okay.
It was three times a day, depending on how many loads they...
Yeah, depending on how many loads.
And now it's every two hours if they go over 10 trucks?
10 trucks, yep, leaving the site.
Okay.
Okay, leaving the site.
Yeah, we... Because some of the language said trips, some of it said when they're leaving the site. So we decided to just make all the language the same, because that's part of what they brought up last week was if there's four trips, does that mean they're round trips? Does that mean they're coming in or leaving? So that's why we just made all that language the same, more uniform.
So coming to the site is not counted?
Right.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Any questions for Jen about the changes in language from the roadway agreement to the special permit? All right. I would entertain a motion.
I would move approval of a special permit.
I... Oh, sorry. Just to clarify for much, I would say as drafted by...
As drafted, yes. As drafted by the attorney's office.
Second.
We have a motion to approve the special permit as drafted by the attorney's office and a second. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Item two. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Remove that we adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
All right. With that, we are done for today.